Good evening and welcome to the Lakeville Area Schools Regular Board of Education Meeting. My name is Judy Kelleher, Board of Education Acting Chair. And the meeting is called to order and I invite the audience members to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the following board members are in attendance. We have Directors Terry Lind, Kathy Lewis, David Anderson, Sinta Schmitz, and Robin Richards. And also in attendance are our Superintendent Michael Baumann and our Executive Cabinet Members, Dr. Emily McDonald, Tony Miseras, Renee Olet, and Bill Holmgren. So because today is the, or today's meeting is the first meeting of the year, we do have to start with election of our officers. So with that, hang out there with me, we need to take nominations for the Office of Chair. Are there any nominations for the Office of Chair?
I would like to nominate Judy Kelleher as Chair.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? Any other nominations for the Office of Chair? All right, then by acclamation, I am Chair for 2022. Thank you for your support. Are there any nominations now for the Office of Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Terry Lind.
All right, any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? Any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? All right, upon acclamation, Terry, you are Vice Chair. Congratulations. Any nominations for the Office of Clerk?
I would like to nominate David Anderson.
All right, any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? Any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? All right, by acclamation, Dave, you are Clerk once again. Congratulations. And nominations are now in order for the Office of Treasurer.
I would like to nominate Robin for Treasurer.
All right, so we have a nomination. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Upon acclamation, Robin, you, Robin Richards is our Treasurer. So thank you and congratulations. And so we then move on to good news. Superintendent. Oh, good evening and welcome to the Lakeville Area Schools Regular Board of Education Meeting. My name is Judy Kelleher, Board of Education Acting Chair. And the meeting is called to order and I invite the audience members to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the following board members are in attendance. We have Directors Terry Lind, Kathy Lewis, David Anderson, Sinta Schmitz, and Robin Richards. And also in attendance are our Superintendent Michael Baumann and our Executive Cabinet Members, Dr. Emily McDonald, Tony Miseras, Renee Olet, and Bill Holmgren. So because today is the, or today's meeting is the first meeting of the year, we do have to start with election of our officers. So with that, hang out there with me, we need to take nominations for the Office of Chair. Are there any nominations for the Office of Chair?
I would like to nominate Judy Kelleher as Chair.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? Any other nominations for the Office of Chair? All right, then by acclamation, I am Chair for 2022. Thank you for your support. Are there any nominations now for the Office of Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Terry Lind.
All right, any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? Any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? All right, upon acclamation, Terry, you are Vice Chair. Congratulations. Any nominations for the Office of Clerk?
I would like to nominate David Anderson.
All right, any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? Any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? All right, by acclamation, Dave, you are Clerk once again. Congratulations. And nominations are now in order for the Office of Treasurer.
I would like to nominate Robin for Treasurer.
All right, so we have a nomination. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Upon acclamation, Robin, you, Robin Richards is our Treasurer. So thank you and congratulations. And so we then move on to good news. Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening all. The first part of good news that I want to share is that our dome at Lakeville North High School has been inflated and officially opened on the 5th of January. We do think that this dome is an exciting addition to our community. And if you get a chance to go in there or have business there, please do so. It offers new sports opportunities for our student athletes and for our community to use. We want to thank our community for all the generous support that was provided. And this wouldn't have been possible without you, as we always understand and know. We also want to thank Dome Partners LLC, who owns and operates the dome. Lakeville Area Schools recognizes January 10th through the 14th as Social, as School Safety and Security Staff Appreciation Week. Our school safety and security staff ensure a safe and welcoming environment for our students, our staff, and our community. And this week, we express our hearty thanks and our gratitude for these vital staff members. Thank you. Donations and Summary of Acceptance of Gift Donations Resolution. A total of $49,478.39 in donations of cash and/or materials were donated throughout all district locations from the following donors: Oak Hills Elementary Parent Teacher Organization, The Benefit Community Impact Fund, Black Bow Giving, First Grade Parents, Brenda Turner, The Holabar Family, The Weinstein Family, Cloat Year, Life Wellness Center, Lake Marion Elementary Parent Teacher Organization, Eastview Elementary Parent Teacher Organization, Life Touch, The Black Bowed Your Cause, Sally Otterson, Dakota Electric, BTD, Kretschlaw Office, and QA1. Oh, there's a few more. Scott and Cheryl Haugen, Cindy Mulcahy, and the Oak Hills Elementary Parents. Details of donations can be found in the board packet under the consent agenda. That is good news and donations, summary of acceptance of gifts, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. And so now we move into public comment. And public comment is so individuals can address the Board of Education with your concerns and issues. And it is not intended to be used for a platform to address the audience. So for the next 30 minutes, the Board invites you to please address the Board. And you will be, each speaker will be given three minutes. And I will let each speaker know when they have 30 seconds left so they can finish their comments in the allotted time. And the Board is here to listen to our school community and understand your concern. And we ask that speakers and audience members, please be respectful. And everyone has a right to their opinion. And we do not want to encourage people from openly sharing their thoughts with us. So with that, are the public comment.
Lance Juffer.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the new school board members here on the Board. My kids hear me rant about this every day. It is a crushing impact that our COVID policies have had on our young kids and children. By far, the least serious risk of serious illness. Even a healthy teenager has a one-in-a-million chance of getting and dying from COVID, which is way lower than the chance of dying in a car wreck. They have suffered and sacrificed the most, especially kids in underrepresented, at-risk communities. Now we have a Surgeon General saying we have a mental health crisis among our kids. The risk of suicide attempts among girls is up 51% this year. Black kids twice as likely as white kids to die by suicide. School closures, lockdowns, cancellation of sports, and masking has a tremendous negative impact on kids and is an afterthought. It has hurt their dreams, their, their future learning loss, risk of abuse, and mental health. Now with our knowledge of vaccines, if our policies do not reflect a more measured and reasonable approach for our children, they will pain for our generation's decisions for the rest of their lives. For me, this is the greatest, most unrepresented story of the past year. Masking young children in schools harms language acquisition. This is important because children and/or students do have the speech or a language ability that adults have. They're not equally able, and the ability to see the face and expression of the mouth is critical to language acquisition, which children or, and/or students are engaged in at all times. Furthermore, the ability to see the mouth is not only essential to communication, but also essential to brain development. Children do not readily acquire SARS-CoV-2 very low risk, spread it to others, children or teachers, or endanger parents or others at home. This is a settled science. In rare cases where a child contracts COVID virus, it's very unusual for the child to get severely ill or die. Masking can do positive harm to children as it could do to some adults. But the best cost-benefit analysis is extremely different for adults and children, particularly younger children. Whatever arguments there may be for consulting adults, children should not be required to wear masks to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Of course, zero risk is nonattainable, with or without masks, vaccines, therapeutics, distancing, or anything else that may be developed. I sent the studies to you guys, 51, 41 different studies, so you guys can see those. But stopping a virus or a flu from spreading is a fool's errand. We gyrate on futile efforts to stop the unstoppable microbes of the virus, one that our federal government seems intent on pursuing, as you all know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hussein Omar.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Hussein Omar and I'm, I'm a junior at Lakeville North. I wanted to share my experience as a black Muslim student attending your schools. I've encountered racism, Islamophobia, and additional difficulties in your schools, such as lack of communication, lack of support, and so forth. Just in the past week, I've experienced your staff and administration's lack of support for your minority students. In my first year, I had no, in my first year, I experienced, in my first year, I came to school on E-Day. It's Islamic holiday to take my finals. Because my teacher would not accommodate, and she gave me zero on my test if I would not have come. Incidents like this is what carries your achievement gap. This violated your policy 102, equal education opportunity. Also, attending your schools, I've noticed that the same people that should be in the front lines to support your minority students are not doing so. Individual teachers and staff are the only support we have. Our school liaisons are biggest supporters and do do the work that needs to be done, but they can't do it all. With a growing district, with more diversity, we need more, we need, we need more support for different communities, such as Asian-American. Other students and I have been working on to create an affinity group, but for students that do not feel safe in your schools. Like Black Student Union, in the past year, affinity groups are essential to students that the school can't support and doesn't, can't support and does not make the school welcoming for those students. Until the school can provide that, it's not going to be gone. You are, this is the, you, racism and Islamophobia should not be tolerated or normalized in your schools. So change them. Have, have more liaisons that can support other communities. Support the affinity groups that we have established. Have a curriculum that empowers students of color. If you're going to say that you care about diversity, act upon it. Your school, your students are depending on you.
You have 30 seconds left. Oh, okay.
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Negreet.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Anna Negreet and I'm the student of, I'm the parent of students in both Lakeville Elementary and Maguire Middle School. Last week, when I picked up my daughter from school, I was outraged to hear what she had experienced in Lakeville Public Schools. Prior to Thanksgiving break, she was confronted by a teacher who questioned about why we didn't celebrate Thanksgiving. She let that teacher know that we don't celebrate the genocide of our people as a Native American family. My daughter was doing her assignment on the Star Spangled Banner last week when the teacher again approached her and indicated to my daughter, my 12-year-old daughter, that savages, savages, she said, killed her people too. My daughter said, "You know that's a derogatory term, right?" The teacher said. Savage is the name of a, of a city in Minnesota, and no, it's not. She went on to address my daughter, questioning her about her politics, whether she supported our former president. She questioned her about her religion, asking her about the earrings that she wore and what they were related to faith or fashion. She made comments about my daughter's drawings, specifically addressing drawings of anime characters where same-sex couples were kissing. She called them inappropriate and disturbing. She said this in the presence of other students of color as well, which concerns me because the message is, this is okay. This is an appropriate way for adults to interact with children, and it's not. She's created a hostile environment for my daughter to go to school. And I did not send her to school today until there is a safety plan to address this. I know that some of you are aware of that, aware of my daughter's situation. But as, as somebody who deals with systemic racism on a regular basis, I'm asking you guys, you guys all are elected officials. You guys have run on the platforms that you care about children, that you care about families. And I need this place to be a safe environment for my children to go to school. You guys have called upon me and my family at the middle school to come and educate you about Native American studies. We've done that gladly. You've come and asked me personally to come and talk about restorative justice. I've stepped and I've up and I've done that. You've asked me to come and, yep. You've asked me to be a part of your parent voices committees, and I've done that. I'm asking you to please address this. Address this with a staff person and make sure that my child has a safe place to get an education. I've already had two children in the district that I've had to transfer to other schools because similar incidents have happened. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rohaim Abibi.
Hello, my name's Rohamia Bebe and I'm a junior at Lakeville North High School. Recently, other students and I have looked at what the district policies have, what district policies have been violated. So we are here today to share what we found with you. I'll be discussing policy, policies 102 and 103. Starting off with 102, the Equality Educational Opportunity Policy. In point B, it states that the school board prohibits harassment against race, gender, religion, and et cetera. Many students have faced discriminations due to these things, whether it's black students being called the N-word or other derogatory terms, having their hair touched, pulled, or even cut without their permission. Muslim students have had their hijabs pulled off and called hatred, hateful, stereotypical names. When students or parents report these things, it's often overlooked or even ignored. The policy 103, which addresses complaints, is being violated when this occurs. It also states in section C, word for word, "The appropriate administrators shall report, shall respond in writing to the complaining party concerning the outcome of the investigation or follow-up, including any appropriate action or corrective measure that is being taken." There is no follow-ups after being, after reportings. If students ask for any information, the only response we get is student confidentiality. I understand that there are laws to protect students' privacies, but it's an issue when your policies don't clarify what follow-ups look like, and they are contradicting one another. You need to fix this. Teachers, deans, and principals need to be held accountable when their teachers, when their students are dealing with discrimination and harassment. It needs to be clear what will happen to students when they are harassing others along with staffs who are ignoring these types of complaints. We need to be held account, they need to be held accountable. Your students don't feel safe and it's your responsibility to fix it.
Thank you.
Amy Solinger.
Is it okay if I?
Uh huh.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Hope you all had a good break. So that young woman, she just took all the fire out of my, out of my speech. I was going to reference the policies that have been consistently broken, policy 102 and policy 103. But since she took care of that, I will move on to what I was going to talk about. One of which is, I referenced this in the last session during, before the break. South Washington School, there, they have a behavior, behavior matrix, which would address this question about what happens when a student does this and what happens when a student does that. And we would be able to understand as stakeholders, parents, students, staff, if a student's hijab is pulled off, there should be consequences. Well, let's let us know what those consequences would be. And I will again say that the last time that the bullying policy was updated was 2017? Is that what you figured out? 14, thank you. 2014, so it's long overdue. Again, I advocate for a behavior matrix. South Washington Schools, their second policy, 102.1, is specifically a racial policy, racial equity and inclusion policy. We don't have that in any of our policies. It doesn't, not specifically laid out to identify how we as a district are prioritizing that. But there, that is their second policy in the South Washington Schools District. And you've heard, you heard from them before the break. You're hearing from them tonight. You understand that the students are scared. Please listen to their voices. One of our students, Aaliyah, her information was posted on a Facebook group that had her name and her phone number, which pretty sure is against the law for a minor. So just want to make sure we understand that we know where that Facebook, Facebook page came from. And we as parents are not okay with it. Fortunately, it's been closed down because it had so many violations.
You have 30 seconds left.
And I think that's about it. Just, you got to listen to the students. They're, they're screaming, they're screaming for your help. Please give it to them. Thanks. Good night.
Leila Warren.
Hi, I'm, hi, I'm Leila Warren, speaking on behalf of Kayla Green, a freshman at Lakeville North. I'm here today because there is a lack of proper masking and prevention against COVID at your schools. There is a worldwide pandemic happening right now. 674 people have died from COVID in Dakota County, 10,906 deaths in Minnesota, and 836,000 deaths in the U.S. Think about that. That's 580 times the amount of students in Lakeville North High School. COVID, COVID-19 is a real thing. If it wasn't, then tell me, tell me what her grandparents died from. When I walked into a classroom, the vast majority of people aren't wearing them correctly, such as under the nose, wearing a mesh mask, or not wearing one at all. You need to add, you need to add the masks to the dress code. For the people who think that you're, for the people who think that they're, you're bigger than the masks you are. I am a 15-year-old freshman and I understand the severity of this virus. Most teachers in Lakeville North do not care about the masking. I know this because they themselves don't even wear it and don't tell other kids to wear it right as well. In policy 432, the Teacher Code of Ethics, it states that a teacher shall make, that a teacher shall make responsible effort to protect students from conditions harmful to health and society. This applies, this applies to masking, masking. Stop putting our safety at risk because you're afraid of angry, ignorant parents. I want to stay in school for as long as I can, but with numbers increasing rapidly right now, I think that the best outcome is to go to distant learning. So please do all that you can for your students. Fix this problem that you have. Let get out of hand.
Aaliyah DeGroot.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Aaliyah DeGroot. I'm a junior at Lakeville North High School. I'm here to discuss one of the many district policies that are being, that's being violated, 413, which applies to harassment and violence. This policy defines harassment, sexual harassment, and sexual violence, all of which students in middle school and high school have and continue to experience inside your schools. When these issues are reported, most students are told that, that there is nothing that can be done, regardless of how severe that complaint is, which is a violation of policy 103 as well. I personally know people who have experienced hate crimes, like being called racial slurs and have received death threats simply because of their race. When these people reported that, when, when these people have reported that this happened, they were told to keep quiet and no investigation occurred like the policy states should happen. In section, in section 10, point D, it says word for word that the school district will develop a method of discussing this policy with students and employees. I've been a part of the Lakeville School District since first grade and I've yet to hear this policy mentioned once or have been taught, or have been taught to understand different types of violence or harassment and how to prevent them or how to address them. I'll also add that this policy says nothing about how, how a student would face consequences for harassing another student. Without proper, without a proper punishment system set up, it allows biases to take place when punishments are made. If you, if you want to make your students feel safe, then start enforcing the policies created to protect them. This policy hasn't been updated since May 2016. That needs to change. This includes holding teachers and administrators accountable to take reports seriously and know how to address these situations when they occur. Make it understood that any form of violence and harassment is not tolerated. Show that, show this by creating a system that discusses how students will face punishment when they act in this way. If you care about your students' safety, then fix this issue.
Athena N.
Hello, my name is Athena Negreet. My mother spoke previously. I would like to talk about the racism that has happened in this school district specifically that I am no longer a part of. It's hard to come here today and have to speak on this school district that I've had to leave because of the racism that I've experienced personally. My little sister is 12 years old and she's had to go through some really hard stuff lately and I'm not happy to see it. I feel that you guys need to take stronger disciplinary action against things like this that happen towards our students. They're afraid and they're not sure what to do because there's not enough support for them, especially our students of color. They don't have enough liaisons. They don't have somebody they can truly connect with due to lack of diversity within this district. In my freshman year, we were asked to do a, a commercial as if we lived in the 1800s. A group of students decided to make a commercial stating that if there are pesky Native Americans on your land, that you can use this stick to beat them and they will go away. I won't explain what that's equivalent to because I'm sure you already know. My sister is 12. Last year, a staff member within her school pulled her hair. That's not acceptable in any shape, form, or way. That's not acceptable in any shape, form, or way. I will not have this happen to the rest of my siblings. I have two younger ones after her, and I will not allow for this to happen. I'd like to see my sister go back to school, and I'd like to see something done. Please. Thank you. Excuse me.
So that is it for public comment. All right, so thank you for your public comment. Um, we do encourage and appreciate hearing from our stakeholders on these district-related matters. And so as necessary, our administration will follow up with the appropriate personnel. And if necessary, the board will follow up during board communications. And so I do have a board communications to follow up on from, um, last meeting, which was December 14th, I believe. Um, we did do a public, a board communication at that time, but, um, there was a lot going on, and I'm not sure if it was heard by all, so I was asked to repeat that. And it will also cover some of the concerns that we heard tonight. Um, so just to put this into context, and we understand these situations are very complex. Um, and we're dealing with the U.S. and Minnesota constitutions, federal and state laws, First Amendment rights, data privacy. We have difference of opinions and beliefs and perspectives. We have employer, employee relationships. We have parents and children, parenting and educating. And in amongst all of this, we do have social media. And we do have to make sure that we are, we all have a shared responsibility to properly manage and use social media with ourselves and with our children. Um, across the country, as we see attacks on our school systems, social media is really being used to polarize communities by deliberately distributing misinformation to rile up, um, to rile people up. And social media is not news, and it is not part of the due process. Um, intolerant behavior is not acceptable. Differences in opinions and beliefs are certainly okay. Um, but intentionally distributing misinformation to reach our, to reach your personal end goal is not okay. And making assumptions about individuals based on intentional misinformation in social media is truly destructive. So how we handle and manage all of this impacts our children's educations. So, um, and that really has to do with some of the comments that we had heard from the prior meetings. Um, and then for some of the comments that we heard tonight, so the management of the district is the work of the superintendent and his staff. And, um, they have been fully supported by the Board of Education. And the board's role is governance and policy setting. So all the district policies are posted on the district website for all to read, and I appreciate them being referenced in your comments tonight. And, um, and just so everybody knows, I am speaking on behalf of our board. Um, but pre-COVID, um, as we had shared, the board and administration had discussed the need to update policies, which we were, um, hoping to start. And then when COVID hit, that took the attention away to addressing COVID needs. So we did talk about, um, policy updates. And, um, on January 3rd, we had a pre-organization meeting to figure out who's going to be on which committees and so forth. And one of the things we talked about was policy review process. And the board and administration discussed getting that process started again to ensure that our policies are up to date and are reflective of the needs of the district. So starting on January 18th, they're going to start reviewing a number of the policies and bring the recommend, recommended changes to the board. Um, they're going to be starting with policy 514, which is the bullying one, and policy 413, which is the harassment and violence one. Those two do address a lot of the concerns that we've had addressed or raised during public comment. And, um, the last time we did this process, it was, um, last occurred in 2016. So it is due time to do that again, and we will get that process back into place to update those policies. But, and then, you know, as an organization, in order for us to be effective and, um, and to follow our procedures, we appreciate you sharing those policies. There's also a process in place for when you feel that there's been, um, or when there has been, um, a violation of that policy. And the conversation starts with the violator, and then the, you know, the teacher, the para, the classroom teacher, the building principal, the dean, to the district office and to the board. And so we do really have to have it flow through the process um, to make sure that, um, it's been addressed at all the different levels. Um, what's concerning though for us, when we do have the social media um, that activates a lot of mass email campaigns, uh, we just want to make sure that we're able to hear from the people that are truly, um, being impacted and have concerns that they want the board to address. Um, not so much recently, but in the last several months, we've had lots of mass email campaigns. And they do lose their effectiveness when they copy and paste everything. Um, and those start to fill our inboxes, and they don't allow us the, a time and attention that we need. Um, and the timeliness of the responses that we need to give to, um, the people that really do have issues that need to be addressed. And, um, lastly, as public officials, um, we are elected. We are elected to represent you. And, um, you know, that gets us really back to the complexity of all that we balance with the wide range of needs and perspectives that we have throughout our stakeholders. Um, but we all do share a common goal, and, and that's the children and educating our children. And we are accountable to you. And it's not about our personal positions. It's about what our school system needs. And so, um, we continue to ask for the respect, and we appreciate the respect that has been shown here this evening. But we want, we, we really ask for respect, not, not for us, but for each other, and really trying to understand where each other is coming from with the concerns that are being addressed. Um, we need to be real, good role models for our children. And so we really respect, um, the comments that we've had tonight. And, um, again, most of what we've heard tonight, the portion of the board communication that was addressed that is to really update you on the policy updating that we will be bringing forth um, and start working on. And I don't know, Tony, if you have an idea of the process, but didn't it take us about, how long did it take us to get through the last total policy review?
The one took easily over a year.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be more focused, um, working with Lydia, stationing the faculty team. I think that's going to be primarily the ones that we'll be looking at initially at least. And we'll do, do evaluation, um, all of them as, as necessary.
Thank you, Tony. So for those who are on camera and didn't hear that, um, it, the last policy update that we took, took well over a year, but this one is going to be more focused um, in having the people at the table going, the right people at the table going through these. So is there any other, um, oh, um, and I'm sorry, also at the last board meeting, do you want me to, I, should I, I should do that? Because that we have to address from the last board meeting, correct? Yep. Um, and then from the last board meeting, we had, um, some comments around, um, ELM negotiations. Uh, sorry. EML negotiations. And so just to update, um, the community and where we're at on that is, um, the board has heard statements and public comment over the last several weeks, and we've received numerous emails regarding the status of the EML contract negotiations. Last week, the district did put forward a proposal that it believed provided the framework for a settlement with salary increases of 2.5 the first year and 2.0 the second year, which is exactly the same general formula increase the state-provided school districts. And this proposal was, um, rejected, um, with no further negotiation or counterproposal from the union. So, um, EML is also, um, asking for contract language changes that would fundamentally change the ability of the district to assign staff to best meet the educational needs of the students, and would reverse an arbitration decision that was, um, reached last year and upheld the district's right to assign district, distance learning responsibilities to best meet the, to best meet the needs of the students. So it is our hope that with the commitment, um, good faith bargaining, and the willingness on both parties to compromise, um, that we can have a settlement soon to be reached in the interest of our educators, our students, and our parents. So that's where we're at with that. And are there any other, um, board communications that we needed to respond to? All right. Yes. Yeah, I did. So, okay, um, so I think that is all we have. And so then we move on to, um, the consent agenda.
Board chair?
No.
I'm sorry.
Additions?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you. Yep, are there any addition, uh, agenda additions? And so is there approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Chair? Um, before we approve it, I'd like to see if we can remove policy, um, 436, 2K from the, uh, consent agenda.
Okay, so, so we can approve the agenda, and then we get to the consider of the consent agenda. We can remove that one.
Okay, thank you.
So is there approval of the agenda by Director Lind? And is there a second? And a second by Director Anderson? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. And then under, uh, consider approval of the consent agenda, um, is there anybody that wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda for further discussion? And I understand you want to pull, did you say K?
Yes, 2K.
2K for, um, uh, agenda discussion. So is there approval of the consent agenda with 2K removed? So that'll be everything else but 2K. Is there approval for, do I have a motion?
Aye.
We have a motion by Sinta Schmitz, and is there a second?
I second that.
And we have a second by, uh, Robert Richards. I gotta remember names. Um, all right, um, any further comments? All right, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, and then under consent agenda discussion items, um, policy, the approval of policy 436. Director Lewis?
We had a extensive conversation concerning this when we met on January 4th. And, um, I just wanted to have a chance to revisit it and have discussion concerning that policy, um, considering, um, conversations I've had with, um, um, our 917 with our representative there involving several other districts and what they've been doing. And then also.
You have to pull the mic.
Sorry, thank you. Um, we had discussed policy 436 on Monday, January 4th, quite extensively, and the upcoming, um, legal actions that were going to be happening. And so, um, participating in, um, our 917 representing the district with that board, and hearing what many of the districts in Dakota County were doing, and then listening to the MSBA, um, uh, discussion today on the legality of this and what the implications were and enforcement of it, um, I felt that we needed to discuss it, um, because I know there was some dissension within the board. And I guess I have two main questions, um, concerning that. And there had been some talk about possibly pulling this and tabling it, um, until the future because it had involved a court hearing, and we don't have the court, uh, decision back yet. However, um, listening to MSBA today, um, and I'm taking a very conservative approach, um, it was more that even though the court had not rendered their decision on it, that it was still, um, uh, in effect, more or less. And we still had to abide by the, um, by some of the things that were put into the policy. So then when I saw that there was, um, possibly that we were going to pull it, my concern was, is it legal to go ahead and pull it? Because we're still, it's my understanding, bound by many of the provisions of it. And does that show us being in good faith if it is pulled? Because part of the enforcement of this by Minnesota OSHA, and they're backed up by the federal, um, OSHA, is to show good faith. And so that's why I wanted to have the discussion on that. Thank you.
Yes, Director Lind?
I'd just like to add that the district administration is the one that's kind of initiated this to, to table it or take it off the agenda. And because they have done that, I, I feel very comfortable with it leaving the agenda. Um, and I would recommend, or I would make a motion that we table it.
And I'll second that motion.
Well, my concern, my concern with tabling it is that, I understand what you're saying. And like I said, I'm taking a very conservative position on that, on this. However, even if we table it, um, it still is in effect. We are still bound by the provisions. And I'm concerned about if, if, um, we're showing good faith, which then exposes our district to a certain amount of liability, um, if we do not have a policy approved. We are still required to fulfill the tenements of that policy or the, or the ruling, um, from OSHA. And, um, so that's, that's it. I just, I want to make sure that conservatively that we are still in legal standing and that we are appropriate, because today is the first day where they can come into enforcement.
I simply have faith in the recommendation by the district administration.
And I believe the Supreme Court is going to rule on it in the next day or two, so it'll be a moot point, basically.
Well, I understand what you're saying. However, if we do approve it, and the Supreme Court rules against it, then, um, we, then it becomes null and void. The policy is written such that it becomes null and void. If the Supreme Court upholds it, then we are in violation, and then the district is subject to potential punitive damages.
Not until, the, the agencies come out and said not, they're not going to start enforcing stuff until like February 9th.
Dave, we can't hear you either.
They're not going to start enforcing things until.
You need to pull your microphone.
They're not going to start enforcing penalties until February 9th.
So. I too attended the Minnesota School Board Association meeting this afternoon and had some of the same takeaways that Kathy, um, is sharing, that this, you know, is still pending litigation at the, or pending discussion at the Supreme Court level, and that it is in effect. Um, but one thing that I did, um, go to district administration about, because it was via their guidance that reiterated the same statements that I was hearing at Minnesota School Board Association when we had our meeting on January 3rd, that we needed to put this in place in good faith because it is law even until there is a stay issued by the Supreme Court. Um, but I did go to the administration, um, right before our meeting, and they are giving us guidance that if we take this off of our agenda, it still is in good faith. Because we are having conversations about it, and because we have certain policies in place, like right now, the matrix that, um, gives us, you know, thresholds for masking. So we are in compliance still with that. And because we have this timeline until February 9th, I would support, um, putting it on, on a stay. In addition, I spoke with a, a friend of mine who's a board member in Chaska, and that was not on their agenda at all this week. And that was when I spoke to her on Friday, and they're really affiliated as well. But I got the same messaging from that Minnesota School Board Association meeting. Um, I do feel like we have, I would like to lean on the guidance of our administration and trust, um, that we have this timeline to be able to see what happens and act as a united board, um, because that will show good faith more than anything else.
Uh huh. Yep, and we, we had the discussion during our retreat, or during our pre-organization meeting, when we discussed this is, there are some policies that we have in place. Whether we vote for or don't vote for a policy, it still becomes law. Um, the policies is just a communication piece. And so, um, the recommendation of our administration is to just hold off on this till we really have clear communications. And it is still. And it is still showing good faith with the direction of what we're, what we're going on. And it changes day by day. And so that's, I think, there's been a lot of confusion, not just around us talking about this, but many districts trying to figure out where this is at. So, so right now, I believe where we're at is, we have a motion to table it until the next meeting, is that correct?
I think so.
Is that, is that the timeline that we're looking at?
Timeline we're looking at, we have two options. If, we could have a special session to vote on it if we needed to, or the 25th of January at our next regular board meeting, unless there still remains a, an unknown, in which case the, we might want to, we might want to act on it in order to set that condition. Or you could just do that tonight.
So are you, are you asking us to table it until the courts have made a decision? Is that what we're looking for, the timeline?
I'm asking you to table it till the 25th of January.
Okay.
When you can have a regular vote again on it, and we won't have any enforcement requirements until the 9th of February, and I think everything will align just fine.
Okay. All right, is.
And I'm also hearing that if we needed to call a special session, that you would have advance notice for us to make sure that we're not going to incur any penalties to the district.
That would be our, that would be our action as a, as a fail-safe.
Under those circumstances, I can agree with that, but I just felt that we really needed to at least have this discussion in light of the information that we had received today. And even though I agree with you about Chaska, there's also many districts that are going in the direction of having approved it.
Yeah.
So, which shows the confusion.
All right, very good. Well, thank you. So then that is pulled and tabled, and there's nothing more that we really need to do, and it's tabled until January 25th. And so then we move to the policy of the first reading of policy 203, which is the operation of the Board of Education governing rules and meeting procedures. And again, during our pre-organization meeting, we just review a lot of our 200 policies, just look at them, understand them. One of the things that we had discussed was our public comment time. And there was some discussion about revisiting public comment. And so I don't know if any board members want to share any ideas or thoughts around what was discussed, but one of the ideas that was discussed was updating our agenda, the order of our agenda, which is included in policy 203. So this is on here to represent that recommended change.
I would like to just make sure that we are clear that we are shifting the public comment. We're proposing to shift it to the end of the meeting with no other changes to the public comment requirements.
Are you making a motion? We need a motion in a second, then we can have discussion.
Oh, I would love to make a motion, it's my first meeting.
Okay.
I motioned to move the.
So, oh, I'm sorry, this, I'm sorry, I apologize. This is a report.
Okay, which is our first reading.
This is a report, I'm sorry. Yep, this is a report for the first reading, because what we do is we read it, and then we let it sit till the next meeting, and then we take the motion in a second. So do you want to explain some of the conversation? Because I know it was you that had talked about why you want to remove, or reorganize the agenda?
Yeah, so one of the things that has been most eye-opening to me, being new into this role, and becoming so involved, that eventually led me up here into this seat as an appointed member, is that the school board truly is conducting a business meeting in public. And I have been attending the meetings every week, or every, every month, bi, you know, bimonthly since August, and have seen what we saw this evening, which is people coming up and showing up and using their voices as we want, and we want to hear them, and we want to give that allotted time. But we want to make sure that, that we are conducting ourselves with a level of decorum that represents the fact that this is a business meeting. And we want people to be able to hear all of the different pieces of our business, which include the board comments, our voting on policies, our discussion. And so we are proposing to move the, this is a first reading of policy 203, to move the one agenda item of the public comment, moving from 1E down to 6, or down to number 8.
And that would actually vary depending on what the agendas look like if we, but yes. So that's, that is really it. So this is the first reading with just that change to the policy. And then this would come before us again on January 25th for a vote. So.
And then we also discussed other changes in the future we might want to make to public comment, but we wanted to start slow, right?
Correct, we, correct, yep. So.
We can't ever hear Dave.
Yeah, Dave, yep. And then.
We had discussed other changes to public comment, but we just, we didn't want to avalanche everybody with a bunch of changes, so we're going to start, we talked about just starting with this one proposal.
So that is it for reports. And then under the recommended actions, the first recommended action we have is the resolution, School Safety and Security Appreciation Week.
I'll make the motion.
I think.
Or we have to read it first?
Yeah, is, yeah. This was going to be presented by, Michael, are you presenting that? The resolution for the school safety?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, I stepped on your toes.
Ready to do that?
Yes. We got a lot going on up here, so it's.
I jumped the gun, I guess.
No, I know, I know, there's.
Apologize.
No, that's all right, we just have a lot going on, so.
Resolution declaring January 10th through the 14th, 2022, as School Safety and Security Staff Appreciation Week. I talked about this earlier in Good News, that we wanted to do this recognition as administration, and recommending this to the Board of Education, that Lakeville Area Schools would recognize the 10th through the 14th as School Safety and Security Staff Appreciation Week. Our school safety and security staff ensure the safety of our more than 11,500 Lakeville Area students, and more than 1,500 employees. And this week, we want to celebrate and say thank you, and offer our gratitude for these essential staff. National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was celebrated on January 9th. And school safety and security staff here at Lakeville Area Schools includes three school resource officers from Lakeville Police Department, of which two, I believe, are with us in this room currently, a district safety and security manager, a district threat assessment specialist, a threat assessment team, and school building crisis response teams. School safety and security staff help keep Lakeville Area Schools and buildings, students and staff, and community safe, and we investigate complaints and threats as we have the capacity to do. School safety and security staff aid students in developing positive behavioral skills, mentoring and counseling students, and acting as mediators when disagreements occur. School safety and security staff train, they train our staff and our teachers to identify and handle emerging safety issues. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to school safety and security staff for ensuring a safe and welcoming environment for our students, for our staff, and for our community, and declares the 10th through the 14th of this year to be School Safety and Security Staff Appreciation Week in Lakeville Area Schools, January 10th through the 14th. Thank you.
All right, so we had a motion by Director Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? I'd just like to comment on the, this, this safety and security and everything that Michael just mentioned is really a well-rounded, comprehensive support for safety and security within our schools, everywhere from identifying where students need help, the mental health side of things, the relationships that our SROs build in, with our students, and building that relationship, to what our tactical consultants are working on with the, with the bond referendum that we are grateful that our community supported with putting security into our buildings, and working with the hardened side of things, as well as with our children. So there's a lot that goes into the security and the safety, and we have a lot of people that we can really thank for that. So that would be my comment. So, any other comments?
I would like to make one additional comment. This, end of this week, we have the Minnesota School Board Association Conference, and Lakeville Area Schools is being a presenter for our school safety and security. And that is a testament to the work of the board and the administration, and those officers that we're, we're recognizing this week. So, bravo.
So, yeah. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we're going to get through all of the, the organizational, the annual organizational stuff that we need to get through. The first, the next recommended action is setting the salary and the mileage for board members for the year 2022. And, oh my goodness, I've had so many papers here, and I know it was here at one point. So the salaries for board members have to be established every year. The amount that has been set was $6,750 per member per year, with a $50 stipend per month for the chairperson. I don't know when the last time was that we've actually increased this, but we're not asking for it to be increased, we're asking for it to be maintained at the same $6,750 per member figure. So with that, is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Lewis, and a second by Director Richards. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. And then the next one is designate the official school district publication for 2022. Hello?
Good evening, Board Chair, members of the school board, Superintendent Baumann. Each year by statute, a school district.
You pull the microphone down.
Each year by statute, a school district has to designate a newspaper to do all of our official notices. We're recommending we continue to use Sun This Week Lakeville, it covers most of our community members on a weekly basis.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Lind, and a second by Director Anderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then the designation of the district legal counsel.
Thank you, Chair Kelleher, members of the board. Historically, we've employed the following school district, or excuse me, law firms based on the issues involved, the specific legal issues such as employment, or student rights, or special education, or referendums. These law firms are Rupp, Anderson, Squires, and Waldsberger, Ratwick, Rosack, and Maloney, and Kennedy, and Graven. It's my recommendation that we continue those relationships for 2022.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Lewis, and a second by Director Anderson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now the next is to consider the organizational matters related to the business office, which has everything to do from the designation of our depositories, to the executive director being able to use the facility signatures for our checks, and authorizing the superintendent and executive director of business services to make short-term investments, and to perform the, perform the duties of the clerk and the treasurer, and this is all in alignment with state statute, to authorize the superintendent and executive director of business to lease, purchase, and contract for goods and services with our general budget categories, which we do review with our budget meetings, or with our business meetings, and then authorize the superintendent and executive director of business to utilize wire transfers of investments and payments. Did I cover everything you were just going to say?
Yes, you did.
I just realized, I just realized I got through all the bullet points, and I figured that's maybe what you were going to say. All right, so with that.
You stole this thunder.
Yep, so is there a, will it take, make one motion for all of this together? Is there a motion?
So moved.
I want to hog it all.
Okay, a motion by Director Richards, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Lind. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we are done there, so we are to the superintendent's report. Mr. Baumann.
Thank you, Madam Chair, a few items, so please, I ask your indulgence. Typically, I don't have a lot here, and it's national championship night, so I'll read fast.
Thank you.
No, I apologize. We have a short update regarding the district's response to COVID-19 for the board tonight. This week, we adopted the CDC's latest guidance regarding shorter isolation and quarantine periods. In short, the isolation and quarantine period is now five days instead of 10. This means students and staff who test positive need to isolate at home for five days, and then can return to work and school if they don't have any symptoms. If you're exposed to a positive case at home, there are two possibilities. If you're fully vaccinated, you don't need to quarantine, and can keep coming to school or work as long as you wear a face covering. If you're not fully vaccinated, you would need to quarantine at home for five days, and then return if you have not tested positive since the exposure. If you have any questions, you can see more information on our website at ISD194.org, or contact your school nurse. Another note on COVID-19 is that we had a lot of cases in our first week back from the break, which we in fact anticipated. In the data we updated on our website on Friday, we had a total of 402 positive staff and student cases within a two-week period. As a result, we are experiencing some significant staffing challenges as a system. We are tracking staff and student absences daily and by building, as well as our substitute fill rates. What that essentially refers to is, what is our rate of success in getting a substitute for a, a regular teacher that, that may be out, or, or, we'll keep it limited to teachers, although we have substitutes for other areas. And the building and district administration is monitoring this situation closely each and every day. Despite that, we're continuing to prioritize in-person learning, because we know that the classroom is the best place for our students to learn. Just know that in some schools, we're getting, we're having to become quite creative in how we keep in-person learning, learning going, while we're facing the unpredictable nature of COVID and the current Omicron variant. While in-person learning is our priority, this situation is very fluid. It does maintain, it is important for families to remain ready, to have a backup plan in place in the event that a program, or a classroom, or a school building would have to close temporarily, and move to distance learning on a short notice. We're also actively hiring for a variety of positions across the district, so if you or someone you know are interested in joining our team, please visit our website to learn more about the many career opportunities that are available. Shorter quarantine and isolation periods will help to get our staff back sooner, if they are ready to come back, as in a healthy situation occurs for each of them. And we want to make sure that that's first and foremost. We need families to help us too. As always, we ask our families to keep their children home when they're sick. Get them tested if they show symptoms of COVID-19, and report positive cases to your school nurses. These two things can help prevent the spread of COVID within our schools, and we thank you for your partnership. Desire Daily Experience Survey is a part of our efforts as a school district to do our, our strategic plan. We are asking parents and secondary students and staff, now through January 17th, the Board of Education and Administration are seeking input from parents and guardians, secondary students, and all staff in our Lakeville Area Schools in defining their desired daily experience. This is a key step for our district's strategic planning work that is underway. Information will be used. Information will be used to help shape the long-term plan for the district. Parents received a survey link this evening to their preferred email. Students in grades six through 12 and all staff will receive a link to the survey tomorrow. This survey is voluntary and your responses are anonymous. Please submit your input on or before Monday, January 17th to help with the strategic planning process and for having a voice in that matter. One other thing I do want to address, there have been numerous allegations made on social media over the past several days relating to a teacher at Century Middle School. This matter was brought to the attention of the administration last August and appropriately addressed at that time. Due to employee data privacy requirements, the district is unable to provide additional information. And I wanted to just make that statement because there's some disinformation in social media that is concerning. So I just want to make sure that the board knows that, that that is something the administration is aware of and has been dealing with. And there's unfortunately disinformation about that. That is my report, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. So with that, I need a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We have a motion by Sinta and a second by Kathy. I assume there's no further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we thank you for joining our meeting and being engaged. And please note that these meetings can also be viewed live on cable channel 188, live streamed on the district website, and watched on demand via the recorded meetings posted on the district website. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is January 25th. Thank you and good evening.